Good morning and welcome to December's Downtown Aviation and Redevelopment Subcommittee. My name is Daniel Valenzuela, councilmember for District 5. I'm honored to chair this Subcommittee and to work with my colleagues on the council and, of course, this Subcommittee, beginning with Councilman Williams from District 1, to my right, to my left, Councilwoman Kate Gallego from District 8, and Councilman Bill Gates from District 3. We began, well, what we'll do is we'll, this, we're now calling the meeting to order. We began this particular Subcommittee, we end it with a call to the public, and of course, everyone will have an opportunity, anyone will have an opportunity to speak up on any one of these topics as we go along as well. So for the first call to public, we don't have any cards. Moving on to item three, the approval of the October 20th minutes.
Move approval.
The motion. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four is for information only, options to dispose of the city-owned HR building located at 135 North Second Avenue. This is also going through the FEE Subcommittee, which is chaired by my colleague, Councilman Gates. Do we have any questions on this Subcommittee? Are we comfortable with moving forward, or would we like that presentation?
Comfortable. I'm fine.
Okay. Items five through seven are also for information and discussion. Item five is the FAA Flight Path Update. I know there's been quite a bit of work that is, that continues to be done here. We do have some representation here from aviation to give us that update. Sir, Mr. Bennett?
Mr. Chairman, good morning, and good morning to members of the Subcommittee. What we would like to do this morning is just give you a brief update on the efforts that have been underway for the past month on the noise issues at the airport. You'll recall that back in April of 2015, the council did approve or adopt a six-point strategy to advocate for noise improvements within the community from the airports, and we'd like to update you on the efforts with respect to that six-point strategy. And I have with me this morning Deb Ostriker, Assistant Aviation Director, who will make the presentation.
Thank you, Jim, and good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the Subcommittee. As you know, the RNAV and Metroplex initiatives around the country have been adding to our concerns here in Phoenix, and so we'd like to update you on the six areas that Jim referenced that we've consolidated down to three, which are legislation and lobbying, litigation and communication. On the legislation side, Senators McCain and Representative Gallego have introduced legislation that would provide for significant relief to the community from these RNAV flight paths. Most recently, to update you, the Senate introduced an amendment that would address community concerns about the recent flight path changes at Sky Harbor and across the country, which is really key. The Senator's amendment would ensure that communities and airports have the opportunity to fully engage with the Federal Aviation Administration before future flight path changes are made. And in addition, for communities that have been, like us, negatively impacted by recent flight path changes that have already been implemented, the amendment would create a process to review those changes and require the FAA to consult with airports to determine steps to mitigate those negative effects. So we were hoping that that would pass before Thanksgiving. It has now been extended, and we are hoping to hear something back on that before December 11th, and we will keep you posted as soon as we hear anything on that. On the litigation side, as you know, the FAA's motion to consolidate the city's lawsuit with the neighborhood lawsuit was granted, and the court is still considering the FAA's motion to dismiss, so we will keep you posted on that. And then finally, on communication, we continue to meet with the public, both in small groups and in the workshops and coffee chats, as well as meet with the airlines to ask that they voluntarily consider night flying at least until some other resolution can be accommodated for the community so that they can get sleep at night. And after that, we will, we will continue to keep you posted on any changes in any of those three areas. And that's all I have for today.
Great. Any questions, comments by my colleagues? I appreciate it. This is an update that we've had on this Subcommittee every month since some of the issues came about, and, and it's, I remember when we were first having these updates, we would have so many people, and it's a good thing. We'd have people coming out, and they'd voice their concerns, their frustrations, their ideas, and I think we're, we're getting to a good place in terms of communication, at least. And everyone is abreast of what the plan is and what our federal delegation is doing, what our local elects are doing, and of course, what our aviation team and our staff is doing. So this is a good thing, and I appreciate just keeping us all updated on it.
Thank you.
You. This next item is also up for information and discussion, 2016 state and federal agendas for aviation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. I'm Tom Remus for the Office of Government Relations. Joining me today is James Orlosky, who heads our federal program, and John Wayne Gonzalez, who oversees our state program. Additionally, in the audience, we couldn't put together our state and federal program without input from our aviation departments. I want to extend my gratitude to our aviation director, to Deb Ostriker, and Mara Kelly, who all work on these issues with us. Today, we're here before you seeking input from the Subcommittee on all aviation matters that would be covered at the state and federal level. Up to this point, we've received input from the city departments. We have asked to meet with each of the council offices and council members to receive your input, to make sure those requests from departments and staff are what you're looking for in our agenda. We will be bringing the full state and federal agenda back to the city council for action at the policy meeting on December 8th. So for today, we're really just looking for input. If there's additional questions, additional information that's needed, or items that are missing, we're looking forward to your guidance. We start off with the item that we always start off with, and that's talking about our guiding principles at the state and federal level. At the state level, we always want to make sure that the state is not shifting any new responsibilities to the cities and towns without the accompanying funds to cover those costs. Additionally, we always want to protect the ability of the mayor and council to set policy at the local level. We look to oppose any reduction in state shared revenues, and as you all well know, state shared revenues make up approximately 34% of the city general fund. On the federal side, we look for the fair share of federal funding. This is an issue that we talk about quite a bit, and it's usually in our community development portion, where we talk about making sure that Phoenix and Arizona receive their fair share of federal formula funds, usually with CDBG, LIHEP, and other programs such as that, including Head Start. We also look to make sure that there's no unfunded mandates coming back to the cities and towns from the federal level. We'll start off the presentation with James Orlosky talking about our federal program. At this time, we have not received any input from departments on bills that we wish to run at the state level for aviation issues. But we will do, as we always do, look to make sure that there's no bills that are negatively impacting the city. We will bring those back to you during the policy sessions during the year to make sure that we receive your feedback. But we are always on guard, making sure that there's no attempts to take away our ability to manage Sky Harbor Airport, as well as our general aviation airports. With that, James?
Great. Thank you, Tom, and good morning Subcommittee members. Just to start off, of course, right at the top of our agenda, it's been one of our top priorities, and you just heard the great update from the aviation department, so I won't belabor the point too much, but the first item right off the bat is the flight path change issue involving the Federal Aviation Administration. And what we're looking for here is to be able to continue to pursue the legislative strategies that are part of our three-point strategy citywide. So we want to continue those lobbying activities. Obviously, there's been a lot of activity, both in the House and the Senate, and we've been very gratified to have bipartisan support from our congressional delegation, including Congressman Gallego, as well as both of our senators, so that's been a tremendous development. Like I said, there's been developments in both the House and the Senate, and we're focused on building coalitions to try to move the issue forward. And so we want to be able to continue working with our DC team and the congressional delegation to move that issue forward, certainly. Additionally, and, you know, also at the top of our agenda is FAA reauthorization. Just like all federal agencies, the FAA has to be reauthorized periodically. We're currently at a point where they're nearing the point where they won't be authorized any longer. There's been a temporary six-month reauthorization that takes us into March, and so when that comes about, we'll be looking to weigh in and have the city's voice heard so that some of our priorities can be hopefully included in that legislation, including, of course, the FAA flight path issue. That would be a logical vehicle to try and get some of our legislative language included in that, so we'll be looking for that opportunity. There's also, I just wanted to note, a list of detailed priorities in your report. I don't want to get too into depth, but there's all laid out in the report. When we talk about Customs and Border Protection and Transportation Security Administration staffing, primarily what we're talking about is just making sure, you know, Sky Harbor is obviously one of the top 10 busiest airports in the nation. We want to make sure that the security presence is commensurate with that. And then I would just also note that security staffing and presence is also incredibly important when you talk about international flight attraction, and so we want to make sure that we have that staffing in place so that we're able to lure other carriers and flights to Sky Harbor Airport. Just continuing on, we also talk about unfunded federal mandates, as well as some of our AIP, which is Airport Improvement Project Fund grant requests. And when we talk about unfunded federal mandates, and again, this is really also embodied in our general guiding principles, we're just talking about making sure that there are no federal mandates that are passed down that negatively impact the city and the airport's bottom line. Just one example, and it's talked about in the report, but is staffing security exit lanes, and there's a price tag of approximately $1.2 million to the city if that were to be implemented. So we just want to always be on guard and make sure that we're defending against those unfunded federal mandates. Additionally, on the AIP fund grant requests, your report contains a specific list of capital projects that would benefit from AIP money, and so we want to look out for those opportunities and get those grant dollars for the, for the airport. Finally, the last item contained in your report talks about Luke Air Force Base, and obviously, everyone knows that Luke is a huge economic generator, not just for the West Valley or Phoenix, but really for the state. And so we want to continue to guard the missions that are currently there and look for additional opportunities to expand missions at Luke Air Force Base. And so we want to support our partners in the West Valley on that and continue the great work that's being done at Luke Air Force Base.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee, we're available for any questions. I know it was a very brief overview. There's a long council report in your packet, and an even longer one coming for the policy meeting on the 8th. Please note that if, after this meeting, if you have other ideas, other questions, please let us know, and we'll make sure to have those comments and ideas included. Thank you.
I do have one card. You okay with going to the card? Ms. Diane Parker?
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman Valenzuela, and Subcommittee Diane Parker. I'm in District 7, and I'm interested to see what Ruben Gallego, our lobbyist, can do to make closure on all of the controversy with the flight changes out at Sky Harbor and the way it's impacted. What our representatives are here for is the citizenry and the neighborhood. I attended the Roosevelt Action Neighborhood Association last meeting, last evening at one time last year I was on the board, so I'm still interested. I read Terry Goddard's pleadings rapidly, but I came to an October 2015 statement from the law firm Denton. They represent neighborhoods, four of them, in this litigation, which is in Circuit Court. And basically, what they're doing, they're reaching a level of $100,000 for attorney's fees. They're billed $910 an hour. 910, I thought 220 was a lot in 10 years ago. But anyway, what it is, and Mr. Goddard emphasized that what they would get out of this only is the historical neighborhoods would, in the future, have notification that there would be a change. So you see where we're going on this, is in the citizen's interest, because they're asking for more legal money and everything for these citizens to be, but we shouldn't be embroiled in all of this. We need closure, and so whatever you can do, let's do it, please.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Okay. Councilwoman Gallego?
Thank you. First off, very excited that we are going to be asking for more support for customs and border control. When we meet with businesses in District 8, we hear regularly about days of delays as they try to move high-value goods through our airport, and so very supportive of that. One of my priorities for the next year is working on land use around the airport, and so it's, I think, should be a priority of the city, that the city should lead on land use around the airport, that we have knowledge of conditions on the ground and need to be. So if we could put specific language, that that is a priority, that, that the FAA should understand our local expertise in that. And on an issue related to land use around the airport, I just want to make sure that everyone understands the one-engine-inoperable rule, and on page 20, it talks about support requiring the FAA to update Part 77 of Federal Aviation Regulations to include the one-engine-inoperable requirement. Could you speak a little bit about that and why that is a priority of the city, and what some of the very significant consequences will be, too?
There's more technical smart people in the room than me, but I'll take a pass at it, if that's okay. Why don't I take a crack at it, because I think I can answer Kate's question pretty quickly. The one-engine-inoperative or the one-engine-out procedure is, is a, is a surface off the end of the runway that in the event that an airline, airplane loses an engine in operation, they, it's a climb gradient that is very low so that they can make their way back to the airport. And so all of the surfaces that are protected by height, so obstructions, so the airplanes don't have obstructions to flight, have varying degrees. Normal flight in the climb, and in the event of a one-engine being inoperative, they can climb more slowly. The result is you need lower limits on height for facilities that are located off the ends of the runways. It has been delegated to cities by the FAA to solve for this, and the FAA has not actually mandated this itself in Part 77 airspace. They have delegated to the, each individual airline, and it is a very, tends to be not a very consistent approach. The key is, we want to have tall things not off the end of runways, and it would be great if the FAA would have a one, would have a rule that says, this is what all people should do, and direct cities to do that. We've had to take this on ourselves. We actually have implemented this off the end of our runways almost, I think, 10 years ago, with the council's direction in zoning. So there's actually a zoning overlay that protects the surfaces off the end of the runways for Sky Harbor. It does not exist to the east, and so it's every time a project in Tempe is proposed, we have to go talk with those developers or with Tempe. And I think the desire is to have the FAA make this a part of their standard review so when someone submits a site plan and a building height to the FAA, that the FAA is looking at the height for the purposes of one-engine-out, and they don't today. And so this is a, I think this has probably been at least 10 years or more, we've been saying this in our federal agenda every single year, that we want the FAA to pick this up and make that part of their standard review for safety.
And right now, in Phoenix, we do it for the types of properties that we have control over, but for example, the state legislature does not allow us to do that with charter schools.
It would be, it would be fair to say that that's the case, although I suspect the shortest distance, once you get past I-10, is about 60 feet in the air. So I would tell you broadly, these are about building things that are hundreds of feet in the air, is generally where we're solving for, for a one-engine-inoperative. But it is fair to say other subdivisions of the state or other entities like charter schools are not subjected to zoning requirements, and so that is true. I think that would also still be the case if the FAA merges this together, but at least it provides us a place to go and point to the federal government's regulatory environment. But you're exactly correct.
I think there is an issue in Scottsdale with one of their runways and a school.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That did answer the question.
Any other questions, comments, Councilmen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is also the Redevelopment Subcommittee, and so just wondering, you know, there has been some discussion, I've seen some emails and things like that, about tax increment financing, and just wanted to see if there's any, anything moving on that, and whether that's a possibility that there might be discussions of that in the state legislature.
Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Gates, yes, there, it's our understanding that there's been a number of conversations going on with Governor Ducey's office and the business community, looking for opportunities to improve infrastructure statewide. It sounds like they're looking at a number of tools, including a TIF-type program. I think that until we actually see language come forward, we know, we won't know what's out there, but we're encouraged to hear that the business community is looking to take the lead on such an effort perhaps this year.
Councilwoman, anything? All right. Thank you so much.
I have a related question to that.
Yes.
There's also been talk about changing what industrial development authorities can do, and I don't know if that would be at the FEE Subcommittee, but since I'm not on it, and it certainly impacts redevelopment, are we doing anything at the city, supporting anything, expecting anything?
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Gallego, at this time, we have not heard anything at the state level. I think there's a lot of ideas this time of year where legislators are pulling together bill ideas. If we do see something, we will make sure to bring it back to the council.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the update. Appreciate it. Moving on to item seven. Downtown Event Planning and Coordination is up for information and discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. This is an exciting time to be before you to talk about some of the upcoming events. So Arizona and the greater Phoenix region, we are just 40 days away from hosting the second annual college football national championship game. And although the game will be played out at the University of Phoenix Stadium in Glendale, we expect and can expect and are planning for that a majority of the fan-related events are going to be held right here in downtown Phoenix. So the city team has reassembled itself. This is largely the team that was part of the, involved in the planning and implementation of the Super Bowl earlier this year. So our team has reassembled. We're focused on providing a safe and efficient event for the college football national championship game. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the events related to the college football playoff. Roxanne Favors, who has joined our team from the aviation department, is overseeing a lot of the major events coordination for the city team. And then Tammy Vo from our communications office is part of our marketing and communications team. So Tammy's going to talk a little bit about what her work groups are working on. And then we'll also talk about some other major events that are in the pipeline for the downtown, as well as some moving forward things relative to managing major events. So this is the footprint, if you will, of the, what is the, going to be known as the championship campus presented by the auction Indian community. The campus is really comprised of an area which includes a special event liquor license area that includes the cityscape blocks, Block 23 in the middle, which is where the main concert stage and ESPN broadcast set will be on that block, and Call Your Center. And then in addition to that, you see the convention center facilities that are also part of hosting events. So with that, I'll turn it over to Roxanne, who's going to talk a little bit more detail about the events.
Thank you, John. So there's three main programming areas for the fan experience. That includes the Fan Central and the championship campus, which is the outdoor activities, and then the playoff playlist live, which is the concert series. So we wanted to kind of share what the hours of operations were going to be for those three main areas. To be consistent, every day they'll open at 12:00 noon, and then particularly on Friday, the local organizing committee, the Arizona organizing committee, and the college football playoff, wanted to show their appreciation to the downtown community by having a soft opening. So that, similar to the Super Bowl experience, from 12:00 to 3:00 at Fan Central, allow those downtown, the sneak peek, to come in and enjoy the facilities before it's open for the regular public. And then each evening, all of the planned activities will end at midnight. I'm sure that there will be fans that will still stick around to go to the different restaurants and bars in downtown area. And so this really, truly will transform the downtown as the Fan Central area for the college football championship. And with that, we needed to create some planned street closures around those activities. So there's three main streets that will be closed, and this is a limited impact, and that's First Street between Washington and Jefferson, Second between Washington and Jefferson, and Third between Washington and Moreau. And so working with our downtown partners, as well as Talking Stick Arena, we wanted to make sure that those that are coming to the Suns game that Friday night will be able to get in and out of the downtown and not be impacted. So there's limited planned closures for those areas. And then on to the best part, the fun of the event. And I want to stress that this is a family-friendly and free event for the outdoors, and what's taking place outside is really exciting. In addition to the concert series that's being brought by AT&amp;T, we'll also have live broadcasts. So the ESPN set, as John mentioned, will be centered in downtown Phoenix, so fans can come and watch their favorite sportscasters in the morning, and College Football Live will be produced there, as well as Game Day, as well as SportsCenter each night will be produced from that location. And not to miss out, our local NBC Channel 12 will broadcast from the cityscape area to bring all the information. And then after every concert series, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, will end with a fireworks display, so nightly fireworks. Very excited about that. Can't be a celebration without fireworks. And then throughout the outdoor event, there will be Arizona-themed and college-themed sponsorship activities. So there are major sponsors of Chick-fil-A, Dr. Pepper, Allstate, will have different things for the fans to do while they're outside. In addition, there will be, of course, concessions to be able to augment our cityscape bars and restaurants in that area. And then just to talk a little bit about the concert series, it was about two weeks ago that the college football playoff announced the musical acts. These are all national recording artists. Several of them are Grammy award-winning and Grammy-nominated. So on Friday night, they're doing different musical genres each night. So Friday night, the headliner is Band Perry, and then on Saturday, again, returning is Walk the Moon, and closing that evening will be Ciara, an R&B singer. And then on Sunday, I always want to say his middle name, so I'm going to do it, the Rock and Roll Hall of Famer, John Cougar Mellencamp. That's what I refer to him as, since he came to Sioux City, Iowa when I was a kid, so we will always call him John Cougar. So he will be the headlining act on Sunday evening of the festivities. So not just are we having fun, but we're going to have some fitness that's going to be taking place. The college football championship has their own community philanthropic initiative, and that's the extra yard for teachers. And one of their fundraising events is the 5K Run and Walk. They did let me know that there's a walk element to this. And so again, this is going to be focusing on downtown. They'll start at the Talking Stick Arena, they'll go around the Arizona Capitol Loop, and then end back at Talking Stick. And the pre-registration cost is $25, and then on that day of the site, it is a $35 registration. All the funds go to help with their extra yard teacher foundation. And then the indoor activities at Fan Central. So those activities will go over the three days, so Friday through Sunday, and I do want to stress that the tickets are very affordable this year. It's $12 for adults, $7 for seniors, children, and the military, and then if you have groups of 20 or more, it's $5 per ticket. And our fans will be able to do interactive games, different sponsor activities, there'll be a championship shop, there's always merchandise to be bought. I'm looking forward to the scarf that they will have this year, as well as food and beverage within the venue. And then some of the daily programming, there will be youth football clinics, there's, they're actually bringing in a football field inside the convention center, so that they'll be able to do clinics, there'll be interviews with college legends. I'm hoping Herschel Walker will be here, remember him as Georgia running back, winning the Heisman Trophy. And then there's also an intermural competition that will be played on the turf later that day. And then on Sunday, the team will have their pep rallies inside Fan Central. Another exciting event, I think, for our fans is, fans will be able to attend Media Day. They won't be able to ask the players any questions, but they'll be able to observe the interviews taking place. And so we're opening the convention center at 7:30 that morning, so fans that have a ticket for Saturday are more than welcome to come join, and they'll be sitting in the bleachers, so they're making it as much of a And they'll be sitting in the bleachers, so they're making it as much of a field experience for the fans that day. And then with the extra yard for teachers, because this is a very important element for college football playoff, they're having a teacher summit. And this will take place on Saturday afternoon for about four and a half hours. It's a free event for teachers. I'm very happy to report that they had anticipated 1,000 registrations. We've already eclipsed that. We've already started a waiting list, and so they're figuring out ways to add additional ticket availability for those teachers that are on the waiting list. And so, this will feature, similar to a TED Talk, there'll be national teachers that will be recognized, as well as several local teachers, sharing, hoping to inspire and engage and energize teachers and their passion for teaching again. So, that is a fun event for the teachers. And then, can't have football without food. So, a great way to raise money for their extra yard foundation is the Taste of the Championship. They held this also in Dallas. And so, for this year, our headlining event and hosting will be our very own and renowned local chef, Belmont McMillan, will be the host of it. We'll have chefs from throughout the valley, as well as chefs from the five playoff semifinal cities of Miami, Atlanta, Dallas. This year, Tampa, since Tampa's the host city for next year, as well as Los Angeles. And so, this is a great way to sample some gourmet food throughout the country of what they consider tailgating food for football. Now, all of these activities wouldn't be possible without all of kind of the planning and coordination. As John mentioned, we reassemble the city's majors, major event steering committee. And within that committee, there are seven working groups, and this is truly where all the work gets done. The tasks are listed and tracked. We are very collaborative to come up with solutions that come about. And we include our partner agencies of the local organizing committee, as well as college football, and Valley Metro, and of course, our Downtown Phoenix, Inc. And those, those are the big areas in which we plan for, the streets and transportation, public transit, not only light rail, parking coordination, because we know not everybody's going to be able to take light rail. Our public safety is a critical element in our planning. As John mentioned, we want everybody to come have a good time, but we want you to get here safely and go home safely. And likewise permitting and licensing to make sure everything gets constructed and everything is on time and looks wonderful. And our downtown community outreach, so that we're not only talking to our business and property owners in the downtown area, but also our neighborhood associations to keep them informed of what's planned, what will be the impacts, and what's those time periods. And then a key element is our marketing and communications working group. As John mentioned, Tammy's going to take a few moments to kind of share the efforts of what her working group has been doing.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the subcommittee. First of all, we're just really excited that for the second time now in less than the year, all eyes are going to be on downtown Phoenix for really an exciting event. Our, our message to the world is that downtown Phoenix is the place to be. Why do we know this? It's because we've proven it already before, certainly with the Super Bowl, which was a huge success for the downtown events. And we had a high-level marketing and communications plan that had really great results. And for the college football playoff, we are ready to do the same. Our plan is to really aggressively target three main audiences. Media from here in the Phoenix area to all the way across the world. Our downtown stakeholders are a huge part of this effort, from the people who live, work, and go to school in the downtown area, as well as visitors, people who are maybe in the larger metro area from across the state and across the country and across the world. We want them to come to downtown Phoenix. Our biggest headline for the media is going to be, of course, the big events happening in the downtown area. But aside from that, our group is actively working on pitching stories to media about the other things that are, are exciting to do in the Phoenix area and in Arizona from, you know, we've got some of the best hiking in the country, we've got the best pizza in the country, you can lay poolside in January. Those are the kinds of things that some of the folks who are coming here to visit for the game are not going to get from where they're coming from. So, we're excited about that. We are also ready for this event on a lot of levels, as we've already proven, but certainly from a public safety perspective, we believe that we have some of the best first responders in the nation, and they are ready as well for this large event. We also have a targeted media approach with specialized messaging to certain target markets. So, at the end of the month, when our final two teams are known, we are going to zero in on those media markets and really pitch and target stories about why Phoenix is such a great place to come and to visit for this event, once we know those two final teams. And of course, our downtown stakeholders are a big part of this equation. In our downtown core, we have approximately 100,000 people in just a one-mile radius, but you even go beyond that into some of our surrounding neighborhoods, from Garfield to the Warehouse District. This is a great opportunity for all of those folks to be part of the action, and that's really our message, is to stay, enjoy, and be part of all the action. But we also do realize that there's important know-before-you-go information that they also need to know for the events, you know, how to get around, how you're going to be impacted if you live close by by street closures, for example, how to stay safe. Those are some of the key messages that we are working on getting across to this group. Also, we're working on developing and coordinating a pep rally, which is going to be really exciting, to kick off the soft launch that Roxanne had talked about on January 8. This is going to be specific to downtown stakeholders. As you may recall, for the Super Bowl, we did it for City of Phoenix employees. Now, we're going to expand it to all of our partners downtown and ask them to be part of this really exciting pep rally. We're going to have a marching band, maybe some cheerleaders. And our goal is to get everyone together and march from Block 23 down to the opening at the convention center. So, look forward to that, and we're hoping that you all will be able to take part in that as well. Our visitors are also going to need to know some very important information, just on how to get here, where to stay, how to get downtown, what to do aside from football events, because we realize there are probably families and friends of the football fanatics who might want to come to enjoy some other things aside from football. So, we're going to work very actively on marketing to those groups as well. How will we communicate this to all of these groups? That's the challenge, but we believe that social media is going to be a primary tool. It's quick, it's fast, it reaches a large amount of people instantly. We did some social media, obviously, with the Super Bowl events, as you'll see right here, some of the snapshots, and those were very well-received. And those were some exciting events, so we will showcase our city leadership as well.
That Councilwoman Spider, Spider Woman there.
On the web, azchampgame.org, that's the host committee's website, is a primary site for the information that's going to be put out, as well as our city website on phoenix.gov. We have a special page dedicated to this event. The news media are big partners of ours, we communicate regularly with them. As well as the partners you see here on the screen, we're working very closely every week in our group to develop messaging through things like newsletters and flyers. Our downtown ambassadors will be on the streets handing out actual flyers to people here about the great things there are to do in Phoenix. Emergency messaging, we're ready for this. Our communication staff is on standby 24/7 during these events to respond with emergency messaging. We'll have a presence at the emergency operations center, as well as onsite if there's any sort of an emergency. We also make it a priority to be in communication with our city leadership and our elected officials should, should any emergency communication need to take place. Here are just some key dates that I wanted to mention. We already had the lineup announcement, as Roxanne talked about some of the exciting acts that are to come. We launched 50 exciting things to do in Phoenix, a 50-day countdown on social media, which we have already been pushing out. 500,000 rec cards are going to be distributed by the CFP throughout our area. Next week is when our know-before-you-go messaging goes live on the host committee's website. We are also planning a media briefing for the end of this month, in which we will have panel members from each of the key groups, and media will be able to ask important planning questions related to the event. Again, we're going to zero in on those two target markets when the two teams are announced at the end of this month as well. There will be an official fan guide printed in the Arizona Republic that will have a wide distribution. And we also will plan our pep rally for the end of the month, or excuse me, the beginning of the events that take place in January on that Friday, January 8. So, there's a lot of exciting things going on moving forward. We think that we have a lot of really great stories to tell. Obviously, we know what's so great about Phoenix, but we want the world to know as well, and we are working on pushing out those stories so that everyone else knows that as well.
Thanks, Tammy. So, now that we've talked about college football playoff, there's still more for us to do. So, what's coming up next for us that we have in development and the planning process for 2016? There's the McDowell Mountain Music Festival, and this is the third year that the festival will be held at Margaret T. Hans Park. We are working on the Cinco de Mayo Festival, as well as a major multi-day music and arts festival in 2016. And I work rather closely with our Parks and Recs, as well as our public safety on this initial planning stages of these events. And of course, in 2017, we have the final four, and that will be the, kind of, I think last month, we unveiled, we unveiled the logo here for the Phoenix tournament at the park in November. So, these are some of the major events that we have in the pipeline. Every day, we get a little inquiries on what's, what else is up and next and available. And then I just wanted to share with you, kind of, because of the demand and the growth and our success of major events, of what we're looking at. And so, we wanted to take the time to do some peer city analysis. We want to learn the best practices of policies and procedures and understand their resources. And so, this peer analysis will be not only with our peers here in the valley, but then nationally, looking at Dallas and Portland and Seattle and San Diego to learn these lessons learned. And in particular, we're looking at the permitting structure, the fee structure, is there ways to improve our seminal process, is there ways to improve our coordination process, and really kind of work through that. And of course, I'll be working with many of those agencies, our streets and transportation, our Parks and Rec, our public safety, so it can be a really collaborative review and peer analysis. And then we will, I will return with the findings and staff recommendations on ways that we can improve our process. We have a really great process, but there's always ways to improve.
And just, just to wrap it up, you know, so over the summer, we've been working very closely with the Arizona organizing committee, which is the local host committee for the college football playoff. We've also been working very closely with the staff from the college football playoff. And some of the, one of the things that I, I've received in terms of feedback from the leadership at the CFP is, and these are people that have done, you know, major college ball games and Super Bowls, and the feedback that I've gotten from the senior leadership is that Phoenix is, does this right, and they've not experienced a city that has, has such a well-oiled machine when it comes to putting these things together. And it really speaks to this, all the city departments and the staff that we have the pleasure of working with every day.
Thank you, John. You're a big reason for that, the three of you are. And speaking of another partner that deserves a great deal of credit, we do have one card, Mr. Dave Kreider, VPI.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I personally appreciate the involvement of the members of this committee in downtown activities. We almost got Councilman Gates on ice skates during the tree lighting ceremony at cityscape, but we had the photographer ready for that. But what I, what I really wanted to say is to thank the professional level of staff support that we're getting now, John and Roxanne and Tammy, working with Paul. I mean, I do really think that we're getting much better at the work that we're doing. We're operating efficiently and effectively, and I think the, the level of staff involvement has been extremely positive. So, I appreciate the day-to-day working relationship that they've exhibited with the downtown community.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Gago?
Thank you. Looking forward to the game and surrounding events. Are we going to be pre-selling light rail passes the way we did for the Super Bowl and trying to sort of get people on and off as quickly as possible?
We, one of the key partners in our effort is Marie Hyatt, and who works very closely with Valley Metro. They are, I can't speak to whether there's a pre-sale specifically for college football, but that's something that we can, there's enough time to work that into a plan to do some pre-selling like we did for Super Bowl, where you could buy like a three-day pass to cover the weekend. So, we can certainly talk to our public transit staff about putting together something like that.
I think it's a great idea. We should, we'll go ahead and do that.
I thought it was very six, I mean, very successful in the Super Bowl, and we, I had the pleasure of being at the emergency operations center when the biggest challenge facing us at the moment was the large number of people wanting to get on light rail. And so, the more we can get people arriving, ready to go, the better. And I think it'd be great if we continue to encourage people to use our mass transit system, but the workhorse will be during the downtown events will be light rail, not the bus system.
Council, Councilwoman Gago. Great, great comment. We will, we'll do that. I, you know, but to your point, we actually are starting to lead with that as an asset and a resource. So, Roxanne referenced an arts festival that we're working on for 2016. That's actually, what you're describing is something we're working on where it's actually becomes a part, much like a Suns ticket, it's a part of entrance, is access to light rail for whatever the duration that the ticket is, because the integration of that as tightly as we can make it, we think gets a better productive use of the light rail versus trying to get people to buy two things, can we get them just to buy one? And then we get, we get them more certainly using it. So, it's a great suggestion, and it is something we're trying really hard to figure out how we can best work with event promoters to incorporate into what they're already doing, because it's fundamentally not, it's a, it's a pretty good deal, you know, you know, parking for one day will be well more than what it would cost you for three days of, of a light rail pass. And so, we think it's a great, a great value, and we will absolutely work on your suggestion.
Wonderful. And then I would love if we can work with downtown businesses. They, we did a great job of making sure the management of downtown businesses knew what was coming, but a lot of their employees, maybe, we could get the message to them that they ought to, to communicate with their employees, because it felt like the people who own the stores knew what was happening, but the people in the stores didn't, didn't always know that. And then I would love it, when we have those final teams, if we can maybe sit down with economic development and just look at ties between our market and the home markets of the college teams that are coming, and, and business partnerships. I would guess we won't get quite the international media we did for Super Bowl, but we'll get a very large amount of media from those markets. And if we can make sure we are ready to go with good stories that would make sense for their local TV news, I think that'd be a great chance to market our businesses and to think strategically about what partnerships there are between our communities and those communities. And I would guess the council members would be happy to weigh in, but there's probably some, some unique businesses in each district, like I have a few automotive businesses in my district that might have partnerships with some of the communities that might be in there. And those are things that, that if we just talk to different people, we might be able to really put a, a good foot forward on the business side, although very glad we are promoting tourism. We have such a wonderful destination, and I'm glad that you're ahead of this and thinking strategically about how to brand Phoenix, so thank you.
Councilman Gates?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, having gone to college in Iowa, and my wife's from Iowa, Councilwoman Gago would be happy to work with making those partnerships when the Hawkeyes come out here. More than happy to help with that. Don't want to jinx them, actually, I probably shouldn't have said that. Great job, great presentation. You've really taken this to the next level. You see that everyone's learned a lot, I think, from the Super Bowl process. And in particular, I just want to thank everyone for having the foresight to, you know, put people on these jobs and not try and force folks to, you know, although I know there's still quite a bit of this where people are doing their day jobs and then working on this, but really having people focused on it. And you guys, I mean, it's just a great presentation. Just had a couple kind of in-the-weeds questions. Is the ice skating going to still be going, or is that closed? How, how's that going to work with the, with the downtown campus?
Mr. Chair, Councilman Gates, the ice skating rink will still be there.
Okay. That's good.
And so, Vice Mayor, Councilman Gates, we will ensure that there's adequate photographic evidence of your skating the next time, because it will be there ready for you.
That's all right. You don't, you don't need to do that.
Did he do it, or did he not do it?
I'm going to Google it.
Yeah, exactly. I don't think you'll find any pictures of me on skates. And then also on that question on the close, the street closures, is Washington actually clo, will Washington is going to be closed? And if so, for how long?
Washington and Jefferson will remain open for the plan is to, they will remain open for the duration. However, in the event we reach capacity within the core block where the concert series is, we could potentially close that Washington as a overflow area, similar to what we did for the Super Bowl.
Mr. Chair, Councilman Gates, however, the, the key goal, we have absolutely committed to the downtown community, whether residential or businesses, for the core part of the business day, we are always going to be open for business. People can use their properties as they use them today. And in fact, this closure is really for, if we hit a surge point, you know, there was a, Roxanne put a picture of Super Bowl where you saw kind of people spilling into Washington. That was a intended- That was an intended flex. Okay, and so we essentially moved the fence to encompass part of Washington for a very narrow period of time, and then moved the fence back. That's the intention of Washington Jefferson. It may only be for an hour or two hours. It is not an intentional, we'll just go move the fence, shut the, so it's really a coordination with streets and the police department, in coordination with our communications function to share with people, we've hit capacity, there are other things to do in downtown, you know, don't want you to not come, but that we would start, that we would, but we would only close streets when we got to a place where we needed some breathing room on the block. And really, we would stop people from coming onto the block, and would be more about it's a public safety solution, not an increasing attendance solution.
Great. Well, again, great presentation and looking forward to it. And you've been in touch with Dave Muncy. Make sure the weather is okay this time. That was the one criticism, you know. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. This is exciting. It is an opportunity. I think we're all on the same page, and clearly you are all leading this effort. But we should be branding the City of Phoenix after the event as well. So this is a big highlight, a big spotlight on the City of Phoenix and our walking trails and everything else. But what else are we known for? This is an opportunity for us to explain. And some of these things, understanding that the National College Football Playoff Committee, you know, they have their own branding. So what worked last year for them, they want to bring to the Phoenix Valley this year, and so on and so forth. But there may be opportunities to integrate and to partner with some of our brands as well. For example, you mentioned some of the, you know, the 5K walk run. We have something called Fit Phoenix here. And is there an element? Is there some sort of a partnership? Have we had that discussion? The event, and I love that they are highlighting teachers and education. We have something called Read On Phoenix here. Is there an element? You know, could that be mentioned in some of this stuff? So that we are explaining not only to the visitors nationally and internationally, but reminding the people of Phoenix that this is the city that you live in. And, you know, these are the efforts that are happening right here every day. On a side note, the celebrity golf tournament, in conjunction with the College, National College Football Playoff Committee, is being held at the Maryvale slash GCU Golf Course. A city, it is a municipal golf course. They could have gone anywhere. They could have gone, there's some, we have some of the nicest golf courses in the world right here in the valley, and they chose this municipal golf course, you know, after this great public-private partnership that is taking place with GCU. But that's the story that we should be telling as well. And I, you know, I'm clearly preaching to the choir, because you're thinking of things that, you know, that I haven't thought of. I don't know if any of us have really thought of. So, you know, I'm really excited about the team given place and the partners that are working alongside as well. But this is a real opportunity, and this team did such an amazing job when the spotlight was here for the Super Bowl, to help carry us forward. In fact, you know, a lot of these other events are starting to trickle in, because as you mentioned, John, this is being seen, our community is being seen as a best practice in the way we do things here. So just, it's important to keep those things in mind, that we have a lot of these great efforts that are happening year-round here with the City of Phoenix. And it's an opportunity for us to partner up with some of these other efforts that are happening with the National College Football Playoff Committee. Okay? All right. Thank you so much. It's exciting. Okay, so we are, actually, we don't have any. So the next item is our last call to the public, and we don't have any cards for that. We did have two speakers throughout this meeting. Do we have any thoughts on future agenda items?
Chair, I see we have a list. And it talks about the planning documents in downtown. Couple years ago, I think there was a plan for Adams Street.
Sure.
Could we have an update on that and tell us what's going on?
Absolutely.
If anything's going on, because I've not heard another word.
There actually is some activity going on, and we'll be pleased to come and tell you exactly about that private sector investment-driven in those sort of amenities we talked about. But we'd be pleased to come back.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.